Good evening and welcome to the Lone Tree City Council's Study Session on July 21st, 2020. In order to comply with the Sixth Amendment Public Health Order 202018, which recommends against government-held meetings with more than 10 people, the city is limiting physical attendance at our public meetings to only essential staff, applicants, and elected officials. And we will continue to provide access to our public meetings via electronic participation for members of our public. All attendees are required to wear face coverings when entering and exiting the building and within six feet of another person. The city will also implement symptom-modering measures for attendees, such as temperature checks and completion of the city's facilities health screening survey. Before we begin our meeting, to access our study session, excuse me, the city council does not vote during our study sessions, since these are presentations for information only. Therefore, there is no public comment during our study session. Okay? We are ready to start, all in our places, and I will turn it over to Kelly first, who is going to introduce the new staff member.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to make introductions tonight in person. We are very happy to introduce Alex Huff, who is a new planner in our Community Development Department. Alex joined us in June of this year and after he graduated from the Master's Program in Urban Planning at KU. So we're super excited to have him here. You might recall that this is a new position that council approved for us for this year in anticipation of growth in the East Side in particular, as well as succession planning, because we know that Jennifer Drybred is going to be retiring from the city next year. So we'd love to have some overlap in that knowledge and training base. So Alex has been, of course, off and running since he got here in June, helping us with plans and adjusting to all of the virtual meetings and helping businesses and citizens remotely, which has been fantastic. So I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thank you, Kelly. And welcome, Alex. Interesting time to be starting your career, I'm sure.
Absolutely, but very thankful, and these are crazy times. But no, I'm very thankful for the opportunity, and I can't think of a better city to live, and especially be back in Colorado. So I'm very thankful.
Wonderful. So why don't you tell us a little bit more, so did you grow up in Colorado?
I didn't grow up here, so I'm from Tulsa, Oklahoma, originally, and that's home. But before I went back to grad school, I lived in Buena Vista for about two and a half years, and so that essentially became home.
Great.
But I got my undergrad from the University of Arkansas in Political Science, and after that, kind of just traveled around, trying to figure stuff out, and eventually...
Well, God help you. Did you?
Yeah.
Alex, help a mayor out.
But no, and it was a great time, and Buena Vista served its purpose, and I think while there, started to really understand and appreciate small-town politics and the ability that you have as a citizen in small towns to engage and be a part of the process. And I learned how much I enjoyed that, and sort of started seeking out jobs and opportunities in that way, and kind of landed on urban planning. And yeah, and I guess now I'm here. And so my wife and I live in Denver, and we love being here, and just love this opportunity more than anything.
Wonderful. Well, welcome. As I kind of greeted you outside, I let you know you were joining a wonderful team. I think one of the strengths of the city of Lone Tree has been the tremendous staff that we have working and guiding us along our path as the elected officials. And I think joining the city at an exciting time, as we look through the East Side and the development that's coming there, and I think the fact that there's so much confidence and commitment to continue to develop in the city of Lone Tree speaks highly of the great work that has happened before. So on behalf of council, welcome to the team, and we're glad to finally see you. We'll try and recognize you from the mask up in the future. And I'm going to turn it over. Jay, you have any comments?
No, just welcome aboard, Alex, and we'll keep you busy. As you know, we're underway on developing the East Side, so you have your work cut out for you, but you're joining a great team.
No, definitely. No, thank you.
When?
Definitely welcome, and I think it's much harder to communicate with someone who needs something done at the city via Zoom or Microsoft Teams or on the phone than it is in person a lot of times. So this is kind of a trial by fire, and good for you.
Absolutely.
Mike?
Welcome, Alex.
Thank you.
It is good to see you.
Absolutely.
We have some interesting business coming up, and you will be an integral part of that as we move forward, so it'll be exciting times. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And Kat?
Great. Well, Alex, we're so glad you're here, and you have such a great opportunity in front of you, because Jennifer is still here. We consider her kind of the Mecca of knowledge around here, and the fact that we're all really pleased that you get an overlap with her, because I think you'll just have not only a great person to learn from, but just a huge reservoir of information. And of course, under Kelly's great direction, we're just super excited to have you on the team. So thank you for being here.
No, thank you.
Now get to work. No, I'm just kidding. No, thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. It's good to actually see your face.
No, of course, yeah. Thank you for allowing me to come and be in the small time, and I know things are different, and we're adjusting. But yeah, it's good to be in person with people for once in a while.
Absolutely. It requires me to shower. No, I'm just kidding. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on in the agenda, our Independence Day debrief, and Denise Kaufman, our Communications Director, is going to be leading that discussion, and she is presenting remotely, so we'll take a second and get her connected.
We're going to be better about wiping down the...
Perfect. Perfect. We appreciate seeing that.
Denise, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay.
Wonderful. Just get the presentation. There we... Oops, wrong one.
More.
There we go. Perfect. There we go. We can start right there. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm very excited to present to you virtually just a brief recap of Independence Day. This year, as you know, we looked a little bit different, but I think it was very well-received in the community nonetheless. As Alyssa presented to you beforehand, what we planned to do, what we did execute for Independence Day was a variety of pop-up experiences. The main one was at the Arts Center. It was a very beautifully decorated pop-up display, which I'll show you pictures of briefly. And then we had various businesses set up, smaller backdrops as well, for residents and community members to take photos. We also handed out nearly 300 bike decoration kits and veteran signs. We lit our Lincoln Avenue pedestrian bridge red, white, and blue. And we also held a food drive to collect nonperishable food items to help three different centers across the area, and the social media contest. Next slide, please. So these were the photos that were submitted. We started promoting basically these activities as quickly as we could. At the beginning, we were a little nervous that maybe individuals, the community members, wouldn't pick up on it quickly enough, but the pictures certainly started coming in, the engagement and so forth. And those are some cute pictures that were submitted for a social media contest. It shows different families across the area, going out to the pop-up experience at the Arts Center, picking up a bike decoration kit, a flag, some of the yard signs, and having fun with the display. Next slide. There's some more. We're very excited. First, we were nervous to see how many would take advantage of the bike decoration kits and the veteran signs, and I'm very pleased to inform you that all the yard signs thanking our veterans were picked up at the municipal building, as well as the Arts Center. We had them displayed there, and also just about every bike decoration kit was also picked up. A few leftovers will obviously be used in the future, so we were very excited to see families taking advantage of this. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned, we did light the pedestrian bridge red, white, and blue, so that was very, very well-appreciated by our community. They enjoy driving through there. We did get some comments on appreciating that that was done for Independence Day. Next slide. And as I mentioned, we had our food drive. We called it the Heroes Against Hunger Food Drive, and we collected nearly 300 nonperishable food items. We were very, very pleased with the result. Again, we had just a few days to promote it, a few days to execute it. The food drive went from Monday through Sunday at various restaurants. We're very appreciative of all the restaurants that participated, and of course, we're very appreciative of the community that participated. And as I mentioned, we collected 300 nonperishable food items that were already donated to the organizations listed at the beginning. Next slide. We also held the social media contest, where we asked the members of the community to go out and participate in any of these activities, or just basically show us how they were celebrating Independence Day during what has been a very unusual year, and we're not able to celebrate as we normally would. And so we had some of the most beautiful photos submitted. All the ones you've seen through the presentation were photos submitted. We had 17 submissions in total, and every day, we selected one to be the winner of a $25 gift card. And then at the very end of the contest, we did select the grand prize winner that won a $200 gift card. So we certainly enjoyed all the photos that came in, and if we go to this next slide, we can see some of the feedback that we got. Next slide, please. These are some of the testimonials we got, either via email or even through Facebook. The community was certainly appreciative, and while it was different, they really did enjoy just being able to go out there and just feel like they were celebrating with the community this special holiday. So again, it was different this year, but I think all in all, very well-received, and it turned out just as we hoped, as we had hoped for. Any questions?
Questions for council or comments? Go ahead, Jay.
A quick comment. I just appreciate your flexibility and your creativity, Denise, on this. I know it was a tough thing to have to put together at the last minute, but great job.
Thank you so much. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank Elaine and Alyssa, who I got the opportunity to work with on this project, and I mean, they were wonderful to work with, and I really appreciate having them on the team.
And Denise, I think on behalf of all of council, we know it was not the celebration that we had always hoped for in the city of Lone Tree, but I think we're really thrilled that we got to show our patriotic spirit and have some activities and opportunities to celebrate in a socially-distanced and a little more cautious way. And the whole team, and I know the Arts Center staff were a huge part of it as well, and you acknowledged just a couple of those folks. So thank you for the great work that you did on behalf of us and the citizens. And I also want to tell you, I read in the CML magazine a great story that I'm sure you had a role in, talking about the work with Lone Tree Feeds and Lone Tree Masks and those two projects. And I think it does speak to the community spirit in our city and kind of a continuity of trying to lean in and help and do what we can. So thank you for that good work.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on to the discussion concerning increasing the membership of the Lone Tree Youth Commission, and Leanna is going to lead that discussion, and... More kids?
Hello, Mayor Malley and council members. Thank you for letting me present our idea. This is from the Youth Commission Liaison. And so if you could go to the next slide, I think, yeah, thank you. Our suggestion is to increase the number of youth commissioners from the current number, which is seven, to 11 members. And there's three main points of why we brought this to you. The first is to expand project capacity. The commission is very project-based compared to other commissions, too. You saw their event last year, which was phenomenal, that it's not nothing. This year, it was a little bit different for projects due to COVID, but they had Senior Street. That's one of the examples that we can point to of this year. We had seven, and only four were able to help out with this event, because two were graduating and one couldn't make it, and so it was four trying to coordinate this event. And it was still wonderful, not to belittle what they've done, but having 11 would expand their capacity and of what they can do. The second one is the main point, I think, that it would allow for youth representatives at more community events. So for example, this year, we had the library come to us as a staff liaison, saying, can you please have youth representative help out with a project we're doing to write letters for seniors? Only one was able to contribute to this. Past years, we've had South Suburban ask for volunteers for the 8K, the Bluff Race. None were able to attend. The Wagon Romp is another event, and just due to their busy schedules, the seven were not able to have that representation. So with 11, the hope is that there would be more to attend these events and be there for the youth commission. The last point is that we still want it to remain competitive. We still want it to maintain that group size. It wouldn't become a service organization like the teen court is, for example. The 11 number is, we wanted to keep it around 10. 11 would be so that in the future, if they do need to vote on something, there's an odd number. But the alternative suggestions was that we could increase it to nine, so still in that 10 range. We could also create more competitive process by increasing what they have to do to apply. So right now, it's the smart sheets they write in a small short-answer question, so we could have recommendation letters or other essays to still maintain how competitive it is. So that was what we have, based on our experience, and so I'd like to open up to discussion, ideas, concerns, and thank you for letting me present our idea.
Thank you. Okay, what do you guys think?
I'm happy to go first. I love this program, and I think it's a bit of a shame that only seven folks get to experience it, because I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for them. So I don't know, hang on. So I'm definitely in favor of increasing the number. I don't really have an opinion between the nine and 11, but definitely an increase, I think, is, it's kind of respectful of the bigger that we're getting as a city as well, and I think that it would be lovely to have more people involved. So that's my two cents.
Jay?
Yeah, I agree. And as a member of the interview committee, I'm actually thankful. A lot of times, it's very difficult to try to narrow that selection down. We have some great candidates, but I think it gives us a little more critical mass, gives them the ability to do more, and they are, all are amazing, and they have very busy schedules as a result of being amazing. So I know a lot of times, it's hard to get them to different events, as you alluded to, so I'm all for it, and 11 is fine by me. The more, the merrier.
So I'm a little uncomfortable with 11. That, to me, just seems a little unwieldy. I probably am more comfortable with nine. I think when we, it was one of the first initiatives I participated on when I joined council, and we spent a lot of time thinking about what that right number was, and we kind of settled on seven, because we thought it was manageable. But I do appreciate the very real concerns or thoughts that, you know, it's been in operation now since, well, gosh, is it 11 years? Yeah.
Wow.
11 years. So I mean, I think we do need to evolve. So, and I think I could agree more, the idea of having youth participate is important. I guess I'm a little, I don't know what the right word is, concerned about the fact that it is hard for them to show up, and having nine of them doesn't mean it's going to be any easier. Typically, these are pretty motivated kids who are probably engaged in a lot of activities, and I guess one of the thoughts that came to me as we discussed this was to, I don't know that we need, I do feel like they should write an essay maybe explaining why they want to participate. I don't know that they need to go through all of the recommendation things, but I want them to understand what the commitment is that they are making, and I guess that's something I chatted with Seth a little bit about, us as the city being more specific. Like, this isn't just something to add to your resume, that you get to show up when you want to show up. This is something that we're counting on you to show up for and participate in, and it's not just the meetings, it is the extracurricular activities. So I would love, maybe you and Austin to kind of sit down and write up the kind of volunteer description and what the expectations are, and then as you interview these kiddos, saying, look, this is a commitment to not just show up at the meetings, it's to be able to participate, and given the fact they've all got different sports and activities, you know, we recognize you can't maybe do one in the fall, but we expect to see you in the spring and that type of thing. It isn't fair that it falls on the same four kids. I think the expectation is that they will, and you guys should come up with a recommendation about how many times they should plan to show up at a council meeting to present on that, so we don't always have the same kids showing up to do that, too. So maybe we can tighten it up a little bit on our end, and, but I guess I'm more comfortable with the nine, and if, Mike and when, we haven't heard...
Yeah, I do think that nine is probably more manageable. 11 is really a large group.
They couldn't possibly social distance.
Right. Yeah, well, they can't anyway, right? No. But I think that sometimes it's hard to get a really large group like that to agree on what's important or how to proceed. Nine is large, but I think it's worth trying.
Thoughts, Mike?
Well, we all know how difficult it is to get a large group of people together. You look around at all the different activities that people are involved in, people that want to be active in the community, and the larger the group gets, the harder it is to have meetings, the harder it is to get together at the same time. I don't have a strong feeling one way or another, whatever you think you can manage. If we got plenty of candidates, then we certainly don't have to be concerned about the quality of the people that do it. I mean, it's a great program. I think we'd like to open it up to more. Number doesn't, whatever we feel we can manage well, and I think there should be some expectations for individuals, and we can tighten up on that a little bit.
You have enough from us to give you the guidance?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay. And thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for the great work you do with these 11 years. It has grown and evolved into a really vibrant group, and as we said goodbye to the two seniors last council meeting, it was, you know, it was a heartfelt goodbye. These kids have been very much a part of, those two in particular, I think, the contributions to the city. So your leadership and guidance with that is very, very much appreciated. Thanks for making it bigger and better every year.
Thanks. So we had a lot of applications, so that's coming up, and it'll be fun to see who's next. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our summer program update. It's exciting that we're actually even going to have a summer program update from Lisa Riggsby-Petersen, who will be joining us remotely.
Yes, Mary, it is exciting. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Four and a half months since we last welcomed an audience to the Arts Center. We're looking forward to doing that again this Friday and Saturday at our 2020 Tunes on the Terrace concerts. As you'll see on the next slide, it's going to look a little different than last time we welcomed people into the Terrace Theater. This is a photo of our production manager, Paul, last week, setting up the chairs and the configuration that you'll see them on the concert evening, making sure there's six feet of distance between each of the parties, as well as 25 feet of distance between the performers and the audience. On the next slide, we have some information about the concerts that have been scheduled. You'll notice that for each of these, there are two concerts per weekend. That's because our capacity is very limited. Because the capacity is limited, we talked to our artists and asked them if they would be willing to perform two concerts for essentially one fee, what we would normally pay for just one concert, given the circumstances and given the reduced capacity. And I'm very grateful that all of them said yes. They understand it's a temporary solution, but as artists, they are as eager to connect with an audience as our audiences are to connect with them. So very grateful to them. We'll be starting this weekend with one of our very favorite artists at the Lone Tree Arts Center, Mary Louise Lee and her band. Then in mid-August, we'll welcome Hazel Miller and the Collective. The last weekend in August, we'll have two different groups. Well, on Friday night, we'll have Solex, and then on Saturday night, Set Sail Yacht Rock. I will have to say that Set Sail Yacht Rock is leading the pack in ticket sales. People are ready for some of that mellow Christopher Cross sailing vibe, I guess. Then in mid-September, we're going to be welcoming back Billy McWiggin, whom many of you know from yesterday and today, and Ray Vaughan, all of the concerts that he has come to do for us that have been so successful. He has a group called Billy and the Downliners, and they drive from Omaha, so it's a very easy trek for them to come, and we know our audiences will appreciate having the variety of performers that we've got scheduled. On the next slide, there's an update about some of the things I've just mentioned and some of the safety precautions, because more than anything, we are committed to making this as safe a return to the Arts Center as possible. You know, earlier in the summer, we have surveyed our patrons and asked them, what would make you feel safe coming back? And we have spent dozens of hours poring over health orders and research, and we want to be as confident as we can as Arts Center and city employees that we are doing everything we can think of to create an environment where people will feel safe. The capacity for the Terrace Theater is just 101. That includes our staff and ushers and our audience members. As I mentioned, there'll be 25 feet of distance between the performers and the audience, and this is based on studies about projection of breath and that sort of thing from singers. Were we to move inside, we would still maintain that 25 feet of distance with the audience being seated beginning in row D. We will be requiring face coverings of all attendees, and we know that so many people, when we surveyed them, said it was the number-one thing that would make them feel comfortable coming back. We know in practice that it is protective and preventative, and so we, as a staff, will be modeling the right kind of behavior and know that our patrons, whom we consider family, will be doing the same. There are a number of other safety precautions for our artists and staff, and what I'll do is, in just a second, we'll play a video for you that we've prepared for our patrons to set their minds at ease. And I do want to just take a moment to give thanks to our city attorney, Linda Mishaw, and Lori Strand in her office, who've been very helpful with us as we work through some of the contractual questions regarding our resumption of programming. We'll have a chance later to talk about our fall programming, but for now, we're excited about Tunes on the Terrace starting up. We're looking forward to welcoming people this weekend. And if we can go to the next slide, I believe we'll be able to show you the safety video that we shared with our patrons yesterday.
We can't wait to welcome you back. This video will be an update on what you can expect when you return. Please enter the building through the main lobby doors. In order to enter the building, you must wear a face covering, and if you are exhibiting any signs or symptoms of COVID-19, please stay home. Upon entering, you'll see our new self-serve scanner stands. Hold the barcode on your paper ticket or your e-ticket on your phone up to the scanner, and you'll hear three beeps that indicate that you're good to go. If you have any problems, don't worry, an usher will be there to help out. If you need to pick up your tickets at Wilcall, let the usher know and pursue the box office. Hand sanitizer stations are placed throughout the building. Please feel free to use them as often as you like. The lobby will have two concession stands available for drinks and snacks. Stickers on the floor indicate where it's safe to stand for social distancing while waiting in line. Restaurants near the main entrance and the north entrance will be available. Stickers on the floor indicate where it's safe to stand while waiting in line, and an usher will monitor traffic flow in and out of the restaurants. We have adapted our cleaning process to include frequent sanitation and cleaning with professional great cleaners. This includes the use of an electrostatic disinfecting machine, which envelops all hard surfaces with sanitizing solution for the broadest efficacy. We will be cleaning all surfaces at least once per hour. Additionally, we are using high-grade air filters and increasing the proportion of fresh air that is circulated inside the building. Seating in the Terrace Theater has been placed to follow social distancing guidelines. Reserved chairs are placed six feet apart, and the front row is 25 feet from the performers. On the lawn, tarps are placed on the ground six feet apart. An usher will help you find a tarp that will fit your park sets. Our ushers will also help manage traffic flow during intermission and after the show. Intermission will be extended to 20 minutes to ensure plenty of time to use the restroom or visit concessions. Please follow social distancing guidelines and always wear your face covering. We're happy to answer any questions you might have or to clarify any of our new policies. Our box office is open 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Mondays and Wednesdays, and four hours prior to performances. Give us a call at 720-509-1000, or email us at boxoffice@cityoflone tree.com. If you have any questions or need assistance when you're at the yard center, any of our volunteer ushers, house managers, or box office staff can either assist you or direct you to our manager on duty. We can't wait to welcome you back.
So I hope that gives you a taste of what you expect. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Lisa. Questions?
Yeah.
Mike?
I didn't...
Mike, are you wearing your mic? Yeah, you are.
I am. I should be. I didn't hear well and didn't quite understand about the air handling system. Do we have to make modifications to the air handling system? Do something different than what we were doing before?
No, I think it's the filters. But Lisa, go ahead.
Sure, of course. There are a couple of things. One is that we've replaced our air porters so that the particulate capture is much higher. Justin Russell could give more detail about this. The other thing is that the HVAC system at the Art Center allows us to bring in, to specify the proportion of fresh air to recirculated air into the building, and studies have shown that the more fresh air you can bring into a building, the safer it is. And so we are just paying specific attention and increasing the proportion of fresh air that's brought in through the HVAC system.
Thank you.
So Lisa, a lot of that seemed geared more towards the performances that are going to be inside. Toons on the Terrace, for example, are you still going to want people entering through the main doors and then walking through the building to go back outside?
We are. We need to be able to manage the traffic flow, and what you didn't see is there will certainly be arrows. We're going to be helping direct certain traffic patterns. But we do need to be able to scan people's tickets, and we need to be able to set it up so that if people were to need to go to the box office to pick something up, they could go very easily. So we've already walked through all of these procedures at least a couple of times. We'll be doing it one time more on Thursday as a staff to see, is there anything else we haven't thought of yet? And if we have inclement weather, we will move the concert inside. And one of the things that I'll note is that particularly in these first concerts, we have reminded people that if they are not comfortable, that we have a refund policy. And we want to make people feel as if, in their first returns to the Art Center, that if they make the choice to come back, we are willing and happy to support them, to make them safe and comfortable, and if they choose to change their minds, that we're supportive of that choice as well.
And so what's the maximum group size that will be able to be accommodated? I noticed the chairs are in sets of ones, twos, and threes. If there's a party of four, would they be split up?
Yes. The party of four, people would buy a collection of three seats as well as one seat. Part of the reason for this is, in order to maximize the capacity, we have gone through dozens of AutoCAD drawings, measurements, and the way to maximize the number of people that we can welcome to the building is if we have those groups of ones, twos, and threes. When we start having groups of fours, that requires a lot more distance around a party. And so it will be a bit of a trade-off for people who may be coming in parties of four, that they may have to have three together and then a single or two pairs. But in order to make these concerts possible, we've had to make that decision.
Okay, and that's even on the, for lawn seating as well? You couldn't have four people sit together in the lawn seating?
We ask people to purchase in the same numbers, one, two, and three.
Okay. Okay. So no, so if a group of two couples come in, they're going to be asked to sit in two separate circles up on the lawn? Is that a fair...
Right, and that's what they purchased. So that when they went through the system, they would have purchased two, probably two adjacent pairs of lawn seating.
Okay. Okay. I'm curious to see how that's received. So, because I do think people want to come, but I appreciate why we're doing it, and I think as we get feedback, maybe we might modify things depending. And I chatted with Seth earlier today. I talked to a couple other mayors who are doing some outdoor performance things, so curious to see if we can get any lessons learned from how they might be going about their system as well. Oh, and finally, are the masks, are the masks on the entire time unless they're enjoying a beverage, or once they're in their seats, are the masks allowed to be taken off to eat or drink?
Right. We're asking all of our patrons, as well as our ushers and staff, to ensure their safety and the safety of others by keeping their face coverings on if they're not enjoying a drink or a snack at their seats. That is the way that we keep each other safest.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure what the process was before I buy my tickets, Lisa. So, all right. Anybody else have any...all those questions were about me on Friday night, evidently. Anybody else have any other thoughts? Mike, did you have something?
Just expanding on your sensitivity, it might be worthwhile to at least calibrate with South of Ruben Parks and Rec. I know that they've opened up the deck at the hotel for music. They tried this a week ago Friday. I did not go, so I didn't know how it went, but I heard there was a large crowd, and they managed the people in some way. And, you know, it's entirely likely that some of the same people that would go to an outdoor concert at the hotel might show up over here. So there may be some differences, and people would want to understand those. So probably worthwhile to make a call, talk to them, and just see where they came out in terms of setting a group size and how many at a table and things like that, just for awareness.
Yep, I agree. I agree.
Absolutely. One of the reasons that we prepared that video, and it accompanied an email that had all of the information, is just so that we set the, so we set the stage for everyone so they understand our commitment to keeping people safe, our commitment to following all of the best direction and guidance that our health experts have. And we're relying on the fact that we all consider each other family at the Art Center, our patrons and our staff and our volunteers, and that together, all of our efforts, even as we're gathering for a concert, will help ensure that we can continue to do it in as safe and enjoyable a way as possible. Happy to reach out to the golf club and see what their experience is, and I think you're right, Councilwoman Mary Anderson will probably see some faces at our concerts that might have been at the golf club last week.
I have one more I just thought about, Lisa. So if somebody is in the Terrace Theater and needs to use the restroom facilities, are they going to have to walk around and go through the main lobby again, or will we be allowing people access to the restrooms through these doors?
Oh, the restrooms will be accessed through the doors to the Terrace Theater, so they don't have to come back around the main entrance.
Okay. That was explained from the video.
Yeah, the main entrance is really about scanning tickets and making sure that people understand how things are set up and where everything is. But absolutely, people are going to be able to come back and forth through that north door if they need the restrooms.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anything...thanks, Lisa. All right, moving on, our public health order update. Bill Medina will be presenting remotely, and Bill, are you ready to go?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm presenting here from the spruce room in the municipal building. We're going to talk a little bit about what's happened since the last time we met, and the big news really is the statewide mask order. If we go to the next slide, this order went into effect on the 16th of July, and it's in effect for 30 days unless extended, which seems likely at this point. It applies whenever you are entering or moving within any public indoor space. And something that's kind of interesting about this order is it places responsibility for compliance on individuals, on owners, operators, and managers of those indoor spaces, as well as on state and local departments or agencies for enforcement. One of the things that I'm sure all of you are tracking is that Tri-County Health has decided not to rescind their order, and they are in the process of amending it to make it sync up with the indoor portions of the state order. Now, something that's unique about the Tri-County order is that it also applies to outdoor settings when social distancing cannot be maintained. So there is a little bit of a difference between the two orders, and that was part of the rationale that Tri-County wanted to maintain theirs, was to ensure that that outdoor component was addressed. If we go to the next slide, there's another component of the statewide order which edits the existing Public Health Order 20-31. And this one is particularly important based on the topic that we just discussed. So what it does is it removes the discretion that employers and operators of places of public accommodation, mass transportation, and critical businesses had previously to deny entry to individuals who are not wearing face coverings. And of course, now it is a mandatory compliance. And just so you understand, the places of public accommodation, part of the long definition includes any public facility, indoor or outdoor. So just the topic that we talked about at the Art Center is addressed in this edit. If there are no questions here, we'll go on and talk a little bit about Protect Our Neighbors.
Questions, Council?
Bill, I just have one question. I had heard... Can you hold on for a second? Is there anything we can do about that echo?
I think the echo is coming from...
From what, Seth?
The spruce room.
Oh, okay.
So if you can turn down maybe the volume in there, getting an echo from there.
Go ahead, guys. I have the impression that Tri-County Health might be revising their order around the outdoor, based on what you just presented. They're only changing what's relative to the indoor order to align with the state, but will be keeping the outdoor order. I just want to make sure I have that right.
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Bill on this part? Okay, go, please proceed. And who's that sketchy guy lurking behind you? Is that your security tonight?
Exactly, yeah. So we talked a little bit at our last meeting about Protect Our Neighbors, and I wanted to go through and kind of show you the metrics in a, probably a little bit easier form to digest. If we go to the next slide, please. Okay, so once again, Protect Our Neighbors allows us to open everything at 50% capacity up to a cap of 500 individuals. And the other thing that's interesting about this is it will exempt counties or regions from a portion of the statewide mask order. So the second portion that I presented on the statewide mask order relative to places of public accommodation would still be in effect. The first portion that I discussed would not be. And so I'm going to talk a little...
Can you clarify? I'm sorry, I'm not the only puzzled face. Can you just give us an example of what you mean by that?
Yeah, so it gets rather, it gets rather, rather difficult to explain and/or understand when it comes to this. Really, when the state has been talking about the statewide mandate for face coverings, it's been talking about the provision to require them in public indoor spaces when entering or moving about. And it obviously provided various exemptions for certain activities and certain individuals. The second portion of the Executive Order 2020-138 is what I covered in the second slide, and really, it talks about critical businesses, places of public accommodation, and mass transportation operations. There's, based on what I can tell, there's little discernible difference between those two distinctions, public indoor spaces and the, and the last three categories that I talked about. So I wish I could provide you a better answer, but that's about as good as I can do.
So I guess I'm still not clear on what exemptions occurs. Where are the exemptions? It says exempts the county, region from portions of the...
So...
This is if you get to the next phase. If you qualify, you could potentially get an exemption.
Okay, so if you meet the criteria associated with protect your neighbor, you could get exempt. Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you, Seth. That makes it very clear. At first, I was...okay, thanks.
Yeah, so the two benefits to qualifying for Protect Our Neighbors are, number one, the 50% capacity for everything, and number two, it exempts you from portions of the statewide mask order. And then we're going to talk about, a little bit about the eight different measures. So the first two measures have to deal with treatment. And here, Douglas County is doing great. The metric is there on the left, and the center is the way it's measured, and on the right-hand side is the status in Douglas County as of yesterday at 5:00 p.m. And so for hospital capacity, we have plenty of capacity to accommodate a 20% surge, and then there are no reported shortages of personal protective equipment from our hospitals in the county. If we go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about transmission. So in the first one, stable or declining hospitalizations, there's two potential criteria here. The first one is 20% increase in hospitalizations within a 14-day period, and we have had no more than that. And then the second one could be kind of focused at counties with the low hospitalization rate, any 14-day period with no greater than two admissions. And so the last time the county experienced a day with three admissions was the 8th of May. So we're doing very well on metric number three. When it gets to metric number four, we're not, we're not quite doing so well. Here, what we're talking about in the first case is incident rate below 25 per 100,000 population, and this one excludes any outbreaks within congregate facilities. And as you can see, we're at 91.88. So you can either meet that criteria, or you can meet the following three. And the first one being the two-week positivity rate being less than 5%, which Douglas County is at 4.2 currently. In addition to testing a minimum number of individuals, which for the county is 257, and during the last seven-day period, we did hit a daily average that exceeded that. And the last condition there is having an incident rate of 50 cases or less, which that number does include the outbreaks within congregate facilities, and as stated before, we are not meeting that metric at 92.75. And then the last three on the next slide have to do with testing and tracing. And here, this is really about Tri-County Health's ability to test and trace cases. And the information that I got from the county is that there's certainly sufficient capacity to test up to 514 tests per day within the county. That includes any public and private testing capacity. The ability to investigate 85% of cases within 24 hours according to the county, Tri-County is saying that they cannot do that. And the other requirement when it comes to tracing is the ability to investigate up to 30 cases per day in the event that there's a statewide surge in cases. And according to the county, Tri-County is not capable of doing that either. Then the last one is the ability of the local public health authority to test close contacts of outbreak-associated cases, and we do have the capacity to do that. And just as a footnote there, the county population used for these determinations by Tri-County Health is listed there at 342,000. So that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Questions? Yes, Wendy?
So I have a question about, we talk about sufficient testing capability, but it doesn't address the lag time for getting results back, and it seems to me that if there's a lag time, you might have to test significantly more than you expect to really get your hands around what's happening.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a really good point, and certainly, in the event that we were required to execute 514 tests per day, I think we would certainly impact the turnaround time on the results of those tests. So it's a point very well taken. I don't think I have any answer for you, though.
Right. I didn't raise it on the call today either, but I, it occurs to me that that maybe should be part of the metrics, that, you know, if you can't get results in three days, then you have to be able to test four times the number or something. I don't know. It concerns me.
Legitimately, yeah. Anybody else have anything? I guess, Bill, is there any discussion with providing additional support to Tri-County Health for some of the investigation, for some of the things that we can do? I mean, what is, I assume Douglas County is working towards addressing where we are not meeting the Protect Our Neighbor goals, right? So is there...
Right. So my understanding is that they, initially when this came out, they were enthusiastic about applying, that, but since then, the incident rates specifically have gotten to the point where we can't qualify for it. So I... So I'm not aware of any ongoing discussions besides providing some CARES funding to Tri-County Health to support their tracing efforts. Seth might have some more updates on that.
Nope, that's what I know, too.
Okay, so realistically, what numbers would we have to be looking at in Douglas County? What incident level would we-- I know we're not there now. As all the data indicates, we are starting to see an uptick, you know, and this is statewide, but we're seeing hospitalization rates like we saw in May. You know, it's gone down, it's coming back up. Do we have a sense of what level we might-- Is anybody thinking about that yet? Or is it still-- Are we still on the-- I understand we have got limited resources. Are we still on the response? Are we responding right now? Are we, at some point, going to be looking at how we might start meeting the Protect Our Neighbor metrics? And I don't mean us as a city. I mean us as a county. Is that discussion happening, Seth or Bill?
I would just mention that we just found out today, late today, that Douglas County received a letter from the State Department of Health saying that the case rates in all of Colorado, but specifically in Douglas County, are putting the variances at risk. So we're in danger of going the other direction--
Losing variances.
I would say, more so than moving in to Protect Our Neighbor.
So I think it's important that we communicate that with the people in our city--
I agree.
And so-- And then be very straightforward about what it is that we can do, what actions we can take as residents and as the city to address those issues, Seth. So what is our plan? I know you're just getting this new information, but what is it that we can put together and work with communications and work with the counties and our business community to get everybody, and our residents?
Well, we're working really hard on, with the business community right now--
Yep.
--on mask wearing and, you know, making sure that they have the right signage and know that they feel supportive if they do have someone that refuses to wear one. And so that's going well so far. And then I think, yeah, I think, you know, we're looking at additional communication tools to say, hey-- And I think I saw this from maybe Jefferson County yesterday that said, hey, our cases are going in the wrong direction. We're at risk of all these things that we just worked so hard to get open, like the pool and those things. Those may have to close if we can't, you know, turn this around. And that's what the county is required to demonstrate to the state is what their communications plan is. So we'll definitely piggyback on that as well.
Yeah, I just feel like it is such a confusing time for people. Even as I sat here, knowing what I know, listening to Bill, I was like, wait a minute, didn't you just say-- And unfortunately, most of our residents and businesses don't have direct access to Bill. This is, oh, no, no, and you.
That's why he has the chief next to him.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly. But I guess I would like staff to spend some time thinking about how we can thoughtfully disseminate information and even on our message signs, talk about things that-- Strategic planning, that communication planning that fits in with what the county's doing, but then--
Yeah.
And I think some of our business partners-- And I know, Jeff, you're doing a great job working with our business partners, but how can we be saying the same things? And people are frustrated. Don't wear masks, wear masks.
Yeah.
Wear them inside, don't wear them outside. You don't need them there, you need them here.
And it's-- Yeah, I think consistency has been a big problem. I think we can help with that by keeping the message as simple as possible. And I think, you know, it's basically wear a mask.
Right, and I feel like maybe we need that on our sign message boards again.
Yeah.
Masks keep us all safe--
Yep.
And our businesses open.
Yeah.
I mean, just because I think people legitimately are confused. And I don't-- You know, this idea of backsliding into--
I mean, that's going to cause--
Right.
--extreme confusion if you go to Foot Locker and it's closed.
Right, exactly.
Why, right.
So, all right, I would be very interested in having-- Learning a little bit more from Denise about what the county plans are as far as communication and what we can do. And Jeff, let's talk about it when we're going to be talking about, to some of our business community, about how we can support their messaging and all get on the same page with messaging. So--
I had a question.
Yeah, Jay.
Just maybe to Seth or maybe the chief. Are we having any compliance issues? I haven't, at least I personally haven't heard of anyone refusing to at any of the retailers. Are we seeing much of that?
We've had a handful of calls and one where someone just outright refused yesterday, and the police responded to that one at Best Buy. But, I mean, it's a handful here or here there, I think. And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not seeing-- I mean, the compliance within Loan Tree has been really good.
Yeah, it appears to be when I'm out.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we have had some incidences, but I'd say for the most part, the majority of people are all complying. And, you know, the signs are up at the stores. And so, you know, we're trying to educate first. We haven't cited anybody. Say, yesterday's call at Best Buy was probably one that may have warranted it, but the officers decided not to. But, and I haven't heard anything from the county or any of the other jurisdictions that they're seeing any real strong pushback from folks. And I agree with Seth, is if we go to that-- If we fall back, then that would be more interesting, I think, if that happens. So hopefully that will occur.
I think Kathy had a follow-up.
Yeah, my only question, Seth, is around enforcement. Given we're working under two separate orders for the mask order, who actually owns enforcement on each of those orders?
So I think we're more or less, when it comes to the individual businesses and citizens, we're really going to utilize the state order. I think it's the most clear one right now as far as the guidance was given. And it's also, that way, you know, that guidance is the same whether you're going across the street or in Centennial, you're here. And so there's a state statute that we could utilize for that. Primarily, though, what we most likely would do is if someone, you know, refused to leave a business or caused a disturbance to business or threatened people in regards to the mask order, we would probably be more likely to be enforcing those types of violations, not necessarily, you know, doing the public health order violation. Because that's typically what we've seen, that's what it leads to, is, you know, a conflict at the scene of where this person is refusing. That's kind of what happened at Best Buy. And then if a business is refusing, then there are some different steps that we can take as far as we could cite the business owner for failing to comply. Obviously, again, we're going to educate, you know, and collaborate with the business owners, try to get them into compliance. But we could cite the business order, the public health order. And then, of course, you can also take steps to potentially, you know, pull a business license.
So I think the city attorney, Linda Michal, has some-- Do you have anything else you want to add, or no?
No, I was just concurring with--
Okay.
--the officer's assessment. Yeah.
Okay.
Tries pass or violation of the public health order.
Perfect, so you're now an attorney, too, Chief. In addition to Bill's bodyguard. No, all right.
Yeah, I will not claim to be an attorney. I'll leave that to Linda.
Yeah, yeah. We thank Ash, we have both of you, we very much appreciate it. Bill, I would love you to send me those 1 through 8 Protect Our Neighbor metrics, measure and status. Would you mind forwarding that on? I don't know if I'm able to-- And council wants to see it or not? Yeah, could you just send that to council?
Sure, Mayor, I'll do that.
And I realize that the number, the Douglas County status is going to change.
Every day.
Right.
But I give Bill a lot of credit for simplifying it into this chart.
Yes.
Seth and I were just talking about this. This is the public health order to translate what he translated into this chart is human's work. So, I mean, kudos to Bill. He's really making this-- No one else is-- I mean, I haven't seen this. The county hasn't done this. Tri-County hasn't done it. So he's really done a nice job of getting it down to the bare bones of what do we need to be looking at?
Right, right. And where are the--
Where are the gaps?
Kind of the pinch points for us, too, on it. So, no. I think council echoes Seth's sentiments. Bill, thank you. Got the MVP award for this work today.
And just one more thing for me before we leave this. I would just want some-- If it turns out over the next few weeks that there's just a tremendous amount of compliance issue, like if we see a surge in that, I guess I'd kind of want to understand that--
Sure.
--as it happens. Just if we're having the police focused on that as their primary job. I've got real issues, right, with that, just because of the other things that I think are way more important right now than exactly that. So right now, it sounds like it's going well, and that's great. I have anxiety over the fact if we move back in any way, and then that becomes a huge part of their responsibilities. It's just something that I'd love to--
Keep a handle on.
Have a heads-up on if we see a change there.
We will do that.
I think it's good. And I do think Seth and I were chatting this afternoon about, there was a large national grocery store retailer that originally had come out and said, you don't have to wear masks at our store. And then they have since quickly revised their opinion. And I even think at the federal level, we're seeing comments about the patriotism associated with wearing a mask. So I hope that our country can unite on battling this disease and taking care of each other and respecting that we, none of us want to go backwards. So--
Yeah.
Very good point, Kath. Okay, anybody else have any other thoughts on this, other than Bill's our hero?
Yeah, love it.
Okay, okay, all right. Jeff, you can be our next hero. You can be the batter up. I'll throw in some baseball, since we have it, is Economic Development Administration Grant Proposal. And Jeff Hallwell, who has been doing unbelievable work with our business community, kind of guiding them through this process. Again, we are a very fortunate community to have such talented people working on our behest. So Jeff?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Great to see you tonight. And the purpose of this presentation is to give you an overview of an effort to really seek any and all possible revenue sources for our activities in the upcoming year. Of course, economic development is going to be a big piece of what I will be focused on, but I think what the community will be interested in focusing on. And economic recovery is a subset of that, that we'll be seeking in this grant proposal that I want to tell you about shortly. Next slide, please. The Economic Development Administration, or the U.S. Economic Development Administration, is a bureau of the U.S. Department of Commerce. You probably don't hear about it often because it's typically utilized or seen in rural communities that might have economic distress. They often get involved in disaster recovery, say after a hurricane in a coastal community or when a military base has been closed in a community, and they step in to help with economic adjustment from that action. But this pandemic has changed everything. The entire United States is now a disaster zone, and the CARES Act has helped fund this program significantly as well. $1.5 billion from the CARES Act was appropriated to the Economic Development Administration for the programs that already exist in their toolkit. One, which is the next item, is the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. And that's what we're looking at. It's a program that provides a wide range of technical planning and public works and infrastructure opportunities to regions that experienced economic downturn or that saw something suddenly happen over time. And I think we fall closer to this suddenly over-- Suddenly type of category versus over a long period of time. So what I'm trying to say here is we are uniquely in a moment where we qualify for these kinds of grants, where typically in the past, the Metro Denver region didn't even qualify to be talking to the U.S. EDA. Next slide, please. The EAA program, or the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program, can assist local governments or state governments with strategy grants, strategic planning, or implementation grants, which would go to a specific business trying to do some economic recovery program. Strategy grants tend to be broad in terms of looking at strategy or creating a comprehensive economic development plan. Implementation grant is something more specific that a community or a company could do to try to create jobs. Primary jobs is what they typically look for. I've been involved in one of these in a previous life where a potato plant in Ray, Colorado, built a sewer and water line from their main to their property so that they could create jobs in this economically distressed community. The company committed to creating so many jobs, obtaining those jobs, paying a certain wage, and building this infrastructure to be part of this program. And that's something I think we could look down the line. But currently, based upon what we have and the success we've had with primary employers, we're going to start by looking at a strategy grant. The next slide, please. What we're proposing in the Loan Tree Strategy Grant to the EDA is asking them for-- What we're in the process of proposing is asking them for a grant of a total of $375,000. That's broken out into four different pieces. First is an economic impact assessment, really taking a deep dive and looking into what COVID-19 has caused to our local economy. We can, you know, presume, and we know a lot of it already, but taking the time to really evaluate the business sectors it's impacted and where we might be looking at going forward. The second part would be communicating with our business community and reaching out to do a business status and the needs survey process with a set of stakeholders and partners to learn what their needs are as well. These two things would also encompass acquiring some tools that could assist us in the short run and long run. Things like CRM system, additions to our GIS capabilities. Those things that could help us not only evaluate, but help us execute things long-term. The other exciting piece of this, which is a partnership with community development, would be work on asking for revenue help support our development code update and fee analysis. Community development would propose to spend the next couple of years looking at the code, especially as it relates to redevelopment opportunities and our existing sites that are, you know, not currently greenfield, and how we could accommodate new investment throughout the community. And Kelly and her department have been very engaged with this to, you know, work on a program together on this grant. And then finally, an economic recovery strategy. As you saw me mention earlier, it would be a comprehensive economic development strategy, as well as, you know, the finality of putting something that we can implement going forward. I will say that I-- Yeah, go ahead, Wendy.
I just had a question about the economic impact assessment and how narrowly focused it is. Is it specific to the city and the businesses physically residing in the city? Or would it include business that the city would have conducted with vendors that may be located outside of our borders? For example, the company that would have taken care of paving on Lincoln Avenue, for example. I'm sure they suffered a large impact with us canceling.
Right. I think, you know, certainly, the grant would be focused on city's ability to, you know, look at its current economy and how to pivot towards what may be our new economy. But I also think it could be very regional. Our employees that come here are regional, the people that shop here are regional. I think it could be very much broader than the city's boundaries. We may not get as specific as, you know, a vendor that might have had a project in the future. This won't be directly-- Maybe in a future program we could. It won't directly go to a business itself.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaw. And then I would, before I go to the final slide, just mention that the idea behind doing this is to really evaluate the tools in our toolbox. I believe that what the city's been looking at for the last 25 years and its vision around economic development has been very solid. I don't think it's going to change much from what has been proposed long-term. However, you know, now that the economy's, of course, taken a very big pivot and that we are starting to experience redevelopment opportunities, this gives us a real good chance to look at it and find new strategies for things going forward as well. So, next slide and final slide. The project timing and what we would be required to provide to this would be a few things. First, you know, it's a federal grant, so its fiscal year ends in September of this year. So we would anticipate that an award would probably come out before the end of September. We'd be seeking several vendors or consultants to assist us with this project. The RFP phase would start next. So we wouldn't actually start spending money in 2020. We'd be looking at evaluating how to do the program, how to find vendors. So I suggest late fall 2020 is when we'd be doing that. And then the project's execution would actually happen over the next couple of years, between 2021, 2022, as we really look at these programs. In most of the income match is made through staff contributions, whether it's from economic development or community development, or even public works. You know, our GIS components can be a big part of this as well. And what they really require in terms of cash would be $20,000 in cash match, which would go to purchasing supplies. I mentioned software programs, those would qualify, other kinds of supplies that we would need to purchase to pull this off. those would qualify, other kinds of supplies that we would need to purchase to pull this off. I would propose, as we go through the budget process, that we find this in the economic, our traditional economic development budget, we could, it would be the work we'd look at for in 2021. I suppose it would bleed into 2022, but if you're agreeable to this idea, that's where we would propose it in the next year's budget. And I'm happy to answer questions and thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other thoughts or questions for Jeff? I think it's a great idea.
My question on the front end, what sets the $375,000 number?
It's a, it's, the number is what we would be asking for as a grant from the Economic Development Administration. Most of the revenue that we receive from it would go to pay for consultants that assist us with the analysis. For example, on the Development Code Update or Fee Analysis, it would take significant work from outside vendors to help us go through that process. So most of that, you know, what we're asking for is to support that kind of work.
Is 375 the maximum you can request?
Actually, there, you could, depending on what you're doing, 375, we actually started with a lower number and they asked us to move it up a little bit. You can go, you can go, I think it could be about $500,000. Infrastructure grants get larger. Obviously, infrastructure costs a lot more, Councilmember Anderson, but it, you know, it felt like, given what we have.
So this is based on what we need to accomplish in our community and what funding may be available to us. So.
Yes.
So I mean, I think it's important to acknowledge we have specific needs in each of these categories and this is, the grant monies are available. So I know we had looked at the Development Code Update and Fee Analysis as a budget item for us, but it was something we had to cut because we weren't in a financial position to be able to do that. And I think as we look at, kind of at all of this with the lens of city finances in the background of it, I think it could not be happening at a better time for us as a city and having the ability to bring in some experts that can guide us through that process. When we are looking at 50% reduction in our self-tax revenue, as I'm sure everyone saw in our latest report. So I think this couldn't be coming at a better time and thanks for bringing it to our attention. And I hope we are successful in the grant process and that's always the question mark, right? So let us know what we can do to support this effort because I think it's very important.
You made a good point. There is a lot of competition for this. There is no guarantee that we get through this. However, I would compliment Rashana Floyd in community development. She's been the one doing all the heavy legwork. She's done a terrific job at the grant and I do think we will compete.
Competitive. Wonderful. Well, that's great news. So thanks. And I think a little head nod from us as far as we'll expect to see that $20,000 in the ECO devil budget for, proposed budget for next year.
Can we have Jeff just give a one-minute update on the business roundtable?
Yes, please. Thank you, Seth.
Can you just kind of share that with council one more time?
Happy to. Yes. And one thing that I think will come out of this naturally is the work we're already starting on establishing what we're currently calling the Lone Tree Business Alliance. I think that when it is created, they'll have the opportunity to brand themselves as well. But the way we're launching it is as an opportunity to bring back a little bit more of the collaboration amongst our business community that has been vacant since the departure of the Lone Tree Chamber of Commerce. The South Metro Denver Chamber has done terrific work for us. They remain a great partner and they will remain a great partner. But what we're hoping to accomplish here is creating a very local brick and mortar, but not entirely brick and mortar, but a group that's, our businesses that look to collaborate, advocate and socialize together. What we will originally start by doing is of course, this Thursday, with an introduction by Mayor Malley to the group about economic recovery in the community as well as inviting them to be part of this entity. We're proposing that it's a, you know, free membership if you're a Lone Tree business. We'll probably ask people to sign up and be a member just so we have their contact info, but it wouldn't be a very heavy burden to provide your email address and maybe a mailing address. And then the Business Council or Business Alliance itself would at first meet, we believe, monthly in a Zoom type of meeting. Skyridge Medical Center has already volunteered to host the August meeting. They want to talk about what they've done to respond to COVID-19. And I think there's going to be additional, big employers and small employers that will want to contribute to this monthly meeting process. Longer term, I think we have an opportunity to get together for business breakfasts, business social events, perhaps an annual business awards for, that, you know, will be duplicated that the Lone Tree Chamber of Commerce used to do. It could also be the vehicle for certain special events. You know, you remember Station Sensation last year. The South Metro Chamber was a great entity to help us with this. But when those opportunities come along again, the alliance would be the perfect place to put it, state of the city and so forth. So what we're trying to do is without significant overhead, it would just be with the work of staff, without significant fundraising required because we have the pieces in place locally to do it. Create additional collaboration in our business community that's been missing since the Chamber departed.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts for Jeff on that, Business Alliance? And I know he would welcome them and we expect all of your businesses to join. All of your local businesses that are represented at this table.
That's right. We'll get it on the website soon.
All right, Jeff, thanks so much. All right, moving on to the flood map, excuse me, floodplain map adoption and potential code update. And Jacob, James is joining us. And did we get that wiped down? Yep. Look at, look at you, Jay, getting it done.
He's gonna up his game.
You already get your own. Yeah, there you go. Jacob, thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you, Jay. Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of council. The item you have before you this evening is a floodplain map code update and then also some other potential updates that we wanted to throw your guys' way to get your opinion on. And next slide, please. So what we're going to be talking about tonight, first and foremost, is the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, has in the works updated a regulatory document called the Flood Insurance Study. And that's a big study for Douglas County and surrounding counties that incorporates several floodplains. But the biggest thing to get out from that is the maps are changing a little bit on all of our area floodplains, for Lone Tree in particular, Badger Gulch and Happy Canyon Creek. So since they are updating their map, every local government who's affected also has to update this latest study. And the effective date is September 4th, 2020. So we're going to get in just under the gun here. So that's the first thing and most important thing that I wanted to apprise council of this evening. But since we had the opportunity to dust off the floodplain code and get it off the shelf, we also wanted to present some other updates, potential updates for council to consider this evening. One of them is being the code cleanup. We did identify a few places in the code. Makes sense to just make a few tweaks based on how the city's operating now and the current conditions. And then diving a little bit deeper, a few higher regulatory standards that we think would be beneficial from a safety standpoint for the city and also just to make the code stronger in the long term. And then there is also another area where we identified the penalty for violations of the codes, a little inconsistent. So we wanted to also chat with council about that this evening. And then the last item is the Mile High Flood District has made a request of all municipalities within their district to update their code to prohibit tents and makeshift structures within the floodplain as an allowable use or just as not allowed at all. So that's what we want to talk about this evening. So next slide, please. Slide? There we go. Okay. So again, the Federal Emergency Management Agency is adopting a new flood insurance study effective September 4th, 2020. So we are also responsible for adopting that same insurance study. And like I said before, it does affect Happy Canyon Creek and Badger Gulch. The other floodplains within the city were not affected by the study, but they are still included within the study. It's just the maps for those two creeks will be changing. So as you'll see, there is no substantial increase or decrease, but there are some minor, minor changes that are going to change the map a little bit. So next slide, please. The main crux for this is an actual study commissioned by the Mile High Flood District and the City of Lone Tree and the Town of Parker and Arapahoe County and Douglas County. Several entities engaged in the Happy Canyon Creek Major Drainageway Planning Study and FAD, and FAD stands for Flood Hazard Area Delineation Report. And that was conducted in 2014. So between 2014 and now is the time period that it's taken us to get to the point of adopting the new maps born from that study. On the map that you can see here, everything in orange is floodplain that's going away. Everything in pink is floodplain that is expanding. So you can see there are just areas of shifts and it's really based off of new, better topographic data, essentially. So next slide, please. The FEMA did initiate the public process on June 15th, 2017. The statutory 90-day appeal process started on June 29th of 2017. And during that process, FEMA did not receive any appeals to the proposed flood hazard delineations. Slide, please. So with this process, after the effective date, FEMA will publish a flood hazard determination, a final flood hazard determination in the federal register. And then again, all the local jurisdictions are expected to adopt the same study with the effective date of September 4th, 2020. Okay, slide. So that was the main thing that we need to do with our code right now. Now, we wanted to present a few other things that council could consider since we've got the code out. The first is just some cleanup items. The first one, Public Works Department is now internalized. So the address for the Public Works Department has changed. So that address will be corrected in the code now. And also just going more sustainable and going digital rather than requiring paper copies of submissions when people come in for flood permits, essentially. Okay. And then as we dug a little deeper into the code, there was this one pesky item where we allow loading areas, parking areas, airport landing strips, storage yards and equipment and machinery all within the floodplain. And we don't have that use in the current floodplain and we don't anticipate that use to be needed in the floodplain in the future. And it's not good industry practice to have this in the code. So since we don't think we're going to need it and we don't have it now, we figured why don't we just strike it with this update?
Jacob, was that a holdover from another code? Why would we ever have had that in there? And I know you weren't here.
We were scratching our heads too.
Okay. I was like, I think we just copied and pasted at some point in our history and I'm glad we're going to select all, delete. Go ahead.
And you know, there are times and places for this type of thing.
Right. I think you borrow someone else's language.
Sure. Right. Yep. And then getting to our first council decision or direction that we did want to bounce off of you this evening was the penalty for violation of this code is currently $1,000. And we recommend going to $2,650 just to be consistent with the rest of the code. So that is one, one piece of direction staff is requesting this evening.
And Jacob, I think what we'd want to understand is how is it then consistent with the code? What part of the code is it consistent with to make that change?
Yeah. And Linda, I think, can I punt that to you?
Sure, of course. So Mayor and City Council, the general penalties provision of your municipal code was recently updated to allow a maximum penalty from $1,000 to $2,650. And that is in accordance with state law that was changed a few years ago to allow, because it hadn't been increased for, I don't know how many years. And of course, that is a maximum fine amount. That is certainly not something that I understand the municipal judge here in Lone Tree to ever impose, but it would create sort of a disincentive for people violating the city's floodplain regulations, which I think is an important regulatory framework that the city has. So that's simply a recommendation to be consistent across the board in all of the municipal code chapters.
And then is there a way to link this to that language? So we don't, so a future council doesn't have to, or staff, I mean, can we just reference the code versus specifically calling out the amount in this code? I guess would be my question.
Referenced the general penalty.
Yes. I mean, I think that's a cleaner way to do it versus just then having to remember to go back. I remember when we did do that.
Yeah.
So then we'll have to remember, where else is that? I'd rather just reference our general code. So there's the direction on that.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes. Okay, slide, please. Okay, so now getting into the two standards that are higher regulatory standards. The first one we're proposing this evening is two feet of freeboard. And what freeboard essentially is, is the distance between the flood elevation and the finished floor elevation. So on this, on the screen here, the light blue that you can see is the FEMA base flood elevation and the dark blue would be two feet above that. And our code, the proposed language in our code, would require that any structure be built with their lowest floor at that two-foot level or higher. Currently, it's at one foot. So I'll pause there. If there's any questions on what this graphic is showing, I'm happy to answer. Sure, Councilman.
Lynn.
So does that include like a basement?
Yes.
Okay, so even the basement would have to be two feet above. That is great.
Yeah, there's a, there's a provision in the code that they can opt to floodproof to two feet above or one foot above, as it currently states. However, it'd be cost prohibitive. You'd have to build the structure a foot entirely above that elevation. Yeah.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So what is the consequence of going from one foot to two foot? What does that really mean?
Yeah, exactly. That's, I'll go to the next slide here and I'll answer that right here. What it means is, nothing essentially. We don't allow structures.
That's what I was going to say.
We don't allow it anyway.
Yes. However, council always has the right to issue a variance to their code. If there were ever a need for a structure in the floodplain, what it means is we're requiring them to build higher and safer. The, the spirit of these changes are to increase safety and the robustness of the code in the instance that these actual scenarios come into play. However, there would be, there would have to be several hoops that would have to jump through before that part of the code even came into play, through a variance process essentially. Does that answer your question? Okay.
We don't allow it anyway, but if some crazy future council did, Mike, we're going to implement the higher regulatory standard.
Yes, in the, in the interest of safety.
Yes, yes.
But if I, if I understand, whether it's one foot or two foot, there's still a variance process in place also.
Yes, correct. Yes. Yeah, the only scenario I can really play out in my head that's a potential would be like a wellhouse or some sort of infrastructure that is a structure that's needed that close to the creek for some reason. A residential structure, I wouldn't see any scenario where the city would entertain that. But again, the current requirement is that two feet of freeboard, if it's considered a critical facility. So that could be a hospital. It could be a fire station, a police station, something like that. And then the one foot of freeboard for everything else. What we're proposing is just to make the code clear that it's two feet of freeboard, no matter what the structure is. So again, like I said, the impact to this, we do not believe is, you know, really there from a development standpoint, just because the floodplain overlay district part of our code disallows structures in the floodplain to begin with. So again, they'd have to go through the variance process and there'd have to be a darn good reason why we need to, you know, go through a variance on that. A benefit, a potential benefit would be if the city were ever to join the community rating system through NFIP and the CRS, the residents who do decide to buy flood insurance would get a discount based on the strong code that the city would have in place. So the stronger the city's code, the better the discount residents would get. And just the plug there for flood insurance is everybody's in the floodplain. It's just a matter of how big of a floodplain you're in. So what, one good example of needing flood insurance is if you live on a corner of a street that has an inlet and we get an inch of hail and it clogs that inlet and the water from the street gets into your basement, your standard homeowner's insurance will not cover that because it's a flood event. So if somebody did have flood insurance, they could use that part of their insurance to, you know, recover whatever was lost with their basement. So just a, just a side note there. Okay. Now, the next higher regulatory standard is zero-foot floodway. And this can tend to be a little bit more complicated, but what you're looking at is a picture, if you're standing in a stream, obviously the stream channel in the middle there is where the water flows all the time. And then as the water levels come up, they come out of the banks and they go into the flood fringe area, which is shown. flood fringe area, which is shown in the brown there. Currently, our code allows you to fill on that flood fringe until you bump up that 100-year water surface elevation by a half a foot. So that's the light blue surcharge area. You're allowed a half a foot in there right now. So, you know, you can keep filling until the models show that the water level increases a half a foot. What we're proposing is you can still potentially fill in the flood fringe, but we're not allowing any rise in the base flood elevation. And the spirit of that requirement is really to keep the major conveyance part of the channel free for major flood flows. Obviously, if you're going to constrict it, water's going to flow faster and it's going to be more erosive and cause more damage. What we're proposing is changing that 0.5 feet to 0.0 feet. And really, again, that's just to keep the flood-carrying conveyance part of the channel. So again, I'll stop there. Is there any questions on what that concept is? Okay, great. So again, like I said, our existing code is 0.5 feet and we're proposing to make it zero feet. Go to the next slide. And again, we don't allow much for activity in the floodplain to begin with, so any kind of filling in the flood fringe would have to comply with some narrow criteria that we've already got in the code. So very few scenarios where this would happen, but there are some that could happen and roadway crossings would be an example of this or roads adjacent to floodways, especially on the east side with development. So there are potential for this. However, the difference between zero feet and 0.5 feet is very, very small when you're talking floodplain modeling and routing. So essentially, if you're needing to impact the flood fringe, you're probably having to do a clomer to change the map anyways, so that's where that would have very minor impact to development, in staff's opinion. And then again, the CRS component. This would get the city more points if we were to join the CRS, which means bigger discounts for the residents if they were to get flood insurance. Okay, now we're down to the last item for you all tonight. The Mile High Flood District is requesting of all local jurisdictions with floodplanes or floodplain administrators to look at their codes, basically because they've experienced some pretty major health issues with what they've been finding in floodplains. As you're all are probably aware, you know, there's been some press around camps in the floodplains and probably more importantly, the cleanup of the camps in the floodplains and what's involved with that. A lot of that has fallen on the Mile High Flood District and they've shared some examples of costs, of what the scope of a cleanup looks like and just how unsanitary it can get. So they have actually addressed this by modifying their floodplain code and their regulations to not allow tents and makeshift structures in the floodplains to help combat this. And they are hoping that the jurisdictions, I believe there's 41 of us in their district, will follow suit so we can all kind of tackle this issue pulling in the same direction. If we do not do this, they will be knocking on our door, asking us to reconsider. But again, it is for council's consideration tonight and if it's, you know, a topic for further discussion, it can definitely not be done tonight either. So, next slide, please. So what they're hoping our language will read is in Section 15-4-60 of our code, that addresses uses prohibited in the floodplain. And their request is to add tents, makeshift structures, enclosures, or other shelters used for human habitation except in locations expressly permitted by the floodplain administrator and having adequate sanitation facilities and flood evacuation plans. So that is their request of every jurisdiction. You know, they freely admit that that language might not be good for everybody or it might be good for some and others want to tweak it. Having read it though, my opinion is it reads well. I think that it's good language to have for enforceability if there's an issue in the floodplain. As we were talking with Linda about penalties and fees, it's directly tied to a violation of our code, so it makes it a little bit more enforceable and easier to deal with if that scenario were to arise. So with that, we are seeking direction on the higher regulatory standards, the two feet of freeboard, the zero-foot floodway, the penalties, and then prohibition of tents and makeshift structures. But again, also enforce that, or reinforce that we do need to make the update to reflect the current flood insurance study effective date. So if nothing else occurs, that is something that we do want to do to stay compliant with the National Flood Insurance Protection Act. So in that regards, the next steps would be we would present an ordinance to council on August 4th for first reading and then a public hearing August 18th to make these code changes.
Great. So if you have any thoughts on what Jacob presented so we can give him some direction in preparation for the ordinance? Anybody have anything they want to offer other than, Gwynn, go ahead?
I'm comfortable with it, especially with that change that refers back to our general fee structure. I think that makes sense to me, all of it.
Anybody else? I think we all absolutely are in line with the Mile High Flood District's request. And the only thing I would just say is let's just vet the language and make sure, there's a part of me that says, why would we ever want to even have an exception? But then I get, it's always nice to have wiggle room. It's always nice to have a little wiggle room. So yeah, I think we're looking forward to seeing it on the 4th and thank you for that very thorough presentation. Let's, council, is there anything else? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Seth is going to give us an update regarding the CARES Act. And Seth, you've got to do the slow walk so they can wipe it down. Slow roll.
Yes, we added this to the agenda. If you could go to the next slide, I thought we would have a little bit more information to share with you, but I think at the last meeting, I shared the update where we are with Douglas County, working really well with them and our other local partners in the county. We have a draft of the agreement. I believe that Parker has actually already approved that draft. You can see here that our allocation is, remains at a potential of $1.2 million. There's a chance that that could go down if we can't find enough, frankly, ways to spend it. It could go up if other partners don't spend as much, but we really worked hard on that blended plan so that we would be eligible for more. So next slide. So we're hoping that we'll bring an IGA to the next council meeting. There's just some small tweaks that need to be made to the one that we have. And again, we've been really, you know, it says we've been highly involved in developing the criteria. I would say we've been taking the lead in many ways of helping the county particularly develop the criteria and use to figure out what eligible expenses are. So I'm proud of that work that our staff has done. Really just nuts and bolts about how the reimbursements will be made, the accounting requirements, which are substantial, where we're going to have to actually almost document hour by hour of our staff's time. So finance will have their hands full, but we've also really enforced with our staff that, you know, we know this is tedious, but every dollar that we get reimbursed here is a dollar that we don't have to cut from something else. So it's not going to be fun, but it's going to be absolutely necessary. And then, you know, it just talks about the reporting requirements and then the exhibit that shows sort of that we're all on the same page about what qualifies for eligible expense. I think that's it.
Okay, pretty straightforward. Any questions for Seth, though? No? Thanks, Seth. And thanks for the good staff work on the development of the IGA criteria. All right, council, next is our consent agenda review, which includes our minutes for July 7th regular meeting, claims for July 30th through the, June 30th, excuse me, through July 13th, and our May 2020 Treasurers Report. Any questions on our consent?
No.
All right, well, we do have an exec session this evening, so I am going to call our 6:00 PM regular meeting to order and we do have all council members present. We have a quorum. I'm going to ask our city attorney to read, to state the reasons council is convening an exec session.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The purpose of the executive session is called pursuant to CRS Section 2464024B and Article 4, Section 6 of the Home Rule Charter for Matters of Attorney Client Privilege Regarding the City's Commercial Solicitation Regulations, as well as pursuant to CRS 2464024B, or 4E, excuse me, and Article 4, Section 6 of the Home Rule Charter for Determining Positions Relative to Issues Subject to Negotiations and Instructing Negotiations Regarding Certain Lone Tree Monument Signs.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous approval. Okay, we are going to take a two-minute recess.
Okay, so dinner is just spread outside these doors, very, the smallest.